All right, good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock, so we will start this meeting. And we will first start with the Pledge of Allegiance and saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And then can we start with roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Aman. Commissioner Calkins. Commissioner Christensen. Commissioner Doris. Commissioner Hallie.
Here.
Vice Chair Nichols.
Here.
Chair Kine.
Here.
As a reminder, before we get started, if you could speak into your microphones for the record, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
So we will move on to oral comments from the public. Please remember that you have approximately three minutes to speak. And anything discussed during the public comments during this period, we cannot take any actions upon anything discussed, but it will be recorded. So do we have anything in the Zoom? Is there anybody here in the chamber who would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, then I move to close public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, fantastic. Then moving on to the consent calendar, we would like to review the minutes from the past meeting. If anybody has any comments to make, please let us know.
I have a change that needs to be made, or an addition, really. Commissioner Aman was here, and there's nothing after his name. Just a present, that's it.
Does anybody have any other statements to make or requests to change?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from May 13, 2025, with the following correction.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Here and none? Okay, wonderful. I will close that section. Moving on to our first item at hand. Just give me one moment, so I'm reading everything. So the next item pertains to a design review for the Humboldt Creamery sign at 180 South Fortuna Boulevard, the Planning Commission Resolution P 2025-3125, and I'll hand it over to staff for a presentation.
Good evening, Chair Kine and Planning Commissioners. We are here with this item to talk about a delivery sign design review at 180 South So this project is a three-by-five-foot freestanding, non-illuminated sign that will help direct...
Actually, I'm sorry. I was just noticed that someone might need to recuse themselves. I apologize.
Oh.
I was unaware of that.
I need to recuse myself for this. Thanks.
Okay.
So if you want, Rusty, you can sit in the lobby, and we can come get you when we're ready for the next item.
And we should clarify that Commissioner Calkins is recusing himself because he is currently employed by the Humboldt Creamery, but he will return after this item.
Okay. And then also, it will be after the vote, so there's no interference or any issues. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a sign that will help direct delivery drivers to the Humboldt Creamery warehouse location that is actually in the Preston Center building. I certainly didn't know it was there, and it makes it difficult for delivery drivers to currently find it. The sign is only 15 square feet in area, and it's going to be placed in a landscaped strip between the sidewalk and the actual Preston Center parking lot. And there have actually been incidences in the past where large trucks have turned onto Smith Lane and actually become stuck and required police assistance to get them out. So this will hopefully prevent that from happening. This is a little picture of where the project is. Many of us are familiar with the Preston Center. It's right next to Ace Hardware, and there is a landscape median where this will go, and surrounded by commercial uses all the way around, across the street, next to, behind. And this is just a hand-drawn site plan where you can see where the driveway is. I wish I could point to it, but I don't think I can. I don't think that shows. But anyways, there's a driveway. The median, the landscape median, is shown. There's an arrow that says "New Sign," and it's currently, where it's placed on the site plan is 42 feet from the driveway, which exceeds the requirements of the zoning code. And you can see where the parking lot is and in relation to the Preston Center and where Smith Lane is. So the idea is to prevent folks from turning into Smith Lane as they are approaching that area. Here's a sign rendering of what the sign will look like. Very understated colors, dark blue and white, which are Humboldt Creamery's standard colors. It's only five feet by three feet, so it's not huge in dimension, and basically, the front and back look exactly the same, pointing different directions. Here's just a picture of where, we actually went out and put a large piece of plywood to show in relationship to where the sign is currently proposed. You may have noticed in the resolution that the applicant has requested the ability to potentially move the sign, depending on what he hears from the delivery drivers may help them the most, and that would be moving it 110 feet to the north, so towards Smith Lane and elevating it up to eight feet. Both of these are still within the zoning code requirements for signs, and it would require approval at the director level if they do make this change. But for now, this is where they're planning to put it, unless they hear from the drivers that that won't work for them. Here it is, shown as if you're approaching from the other direction. It's not illuminated, and it's non-obtrusive. And I personally like it better elevated, but it's up to the applicant. So the design review, some of you may be going, why does this even have to come to design review? Unfortunately, our code currently requires that signs must have design review. They don't require a conditional use permit in commercial zoning districts, but they do have to come to your board for approval. And basically, what you're looking at is to make sure that it isn't going to be obtrusive, that it, you know, most of these things don't even apply, but I just did include the section that is design review and mentions the requirements there. Again, same things. I highlighted some of the areas that do actually, you know, probably are under consideration here, that it's not ugly and harmonious or monotonous, that it, you know, the design materials, texture, and colors and, you know, signage work well, that the details of the design achieve the purposes of design review, and that is compliant with all of the other policy standards of the municipal code, general plan, and any specific plan, which there isn't one that applies to that area. So then a little bit more about the sign requirements in the code. So I did, on the left-hand side, indicate here what the zoning code requires, and on the right, you can see that the sign is consistent with what is required in terms of its size, its design, and the fact that it's not animated, doesn't flash, revolve, or move. So this project qualifies for a Class 11 categorical exemption, which actually addresses specifically on-premise signs, and it is not subject to any of the exceptions included in SEQA Guideline Section 153002. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the project, and the actions that are requested are below. And it does say that it's a voice vote on here, but it actually is roll call.
Okay. Thank you, Sheri, for that. I appreciate it. If the applicant or the representative is here and would like to speak, I would like to open the floor to them before public comment. If not, if I would open the floor for public comment, I'll start with Zoom first, see if anybody's online. No? Is there anybody in the chamber who would like to speak regarding this one? Seeing no, I will close public comment and then open it up to the commission for any questions to staff.
Sheri, you had mentioned that, that it could be higher. I think it, I feel it would be better higher because people's eye level, I just was watching the signs as I went by of all the grabs, and, I mean, it draws you away from what you're really supposed to be looking at. And eye level, if you're in a semi, is going to be a lot higher than looking down at the ground.
And I agree with you, and staff did encourage the change. However, where they have it placed does meet all requirements of the zoning code, so ultimately, it's their decision. I suggested it also being higher so they could not have animals use it as a potty board, and also, they would be able to mow underneath it. So that's why I included that as an option for them without having to come back to your board, that the director would be able to approve that.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, does anybody know from which direction most of the deliveries are coming from? Are they coming from the north, going southbound, or going from the south, northbound?
Apparently, it's equal, and that's why it's going to be the same on both sides.
Okay. Well, then, I mean, I'm definitely excited about any subdued and simple advertisements for a local business. One, because it's in our community, and I feel it enriches it, and then also, if it just helps productivity and, you know, evades any issues with traffic control, I think this sounds great. So if there's no more questions from the commission, I would entertain a motion.
I will move the item that we're talking about and adopt Resolution P 2025-3125, approving design review for this sign that we've been discussing.
Commissioner Hallie, this also needs to be a second as well for the resolution.
Is there a second?
A second to that motion.
We have a second. Would you be able to read the resolution one more time? Thank you.
To adopt Resolution 2025-3125, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna, approving design review for a new 15-square-foot freestanding sign to be installed at 180 South Fortuna Boulevard. Roll call vote. I have Commissioner Aman. Commissioner Calkins.
He's abstaining.
Oh, he's abstaining. Commissioner Christensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Doris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Vice Chair Nichols.
Yes.
Chair Kine.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion.
Fantastic. That motion passes. So moving on to the second part of the project, or sorry, the next portion, Item 4B, a minor subdivision at 3495 Ronerville Road, Planning Commission Resolution P 2025-3126. And before we begin, I'll make sure that everyone's back in their seats and everything's good to go. Sheri, if you can do the presentation, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Yes. So good evening again. I'm still Sheri Meads, the Community Development Director, and for this item, we're looking at the minor subdivision at 3495 Ronerville Road. This subdivides a 7.69-acre parcel into two new residential lots and a remainder parcel. Parcel 1 is a new .23-acre residential lot, and Parcel 2 is a .18-acre residential lot. The remainder parcel is the biggest part of the lot, and it includes an existing single-family home that will remain. We all live here. Most of you have already seen that one of the lots has a modular home on it, and that was allowed because it was considered an ADU, which is allowed by state law. Now that it is going to be subdivided into three lots, each will be its own single-family and residence with its own addressing. And all of the parcels are served by City Water and Sewer and PG&E utilities. So here's a little bit of a location map that you can see within the context of the city, that it is right along Ronerville Road in an area that is surrounded pretty much by residential uses. And as mentioned before, there is already one single-family home located on it and what we're currently calling an ADU, which will then become a single-family residence if this subdivision is approved. The general plan land use for the site is RM, which is residential medium. It does allow for single-family detached and attached homes and secondary residential units. It provides a relatively high density for the City of Fortuna, which is 7 to 14.9 units per acre, and this project will not meet that requirement. It results in a much lower density of approximately 2.5 units per acre. However, the hillside adjacent to the largest part of the parcel, which we're all probably familiar with, has been historically unstable, and therefore, it is quite possible that it would not be possible to meet the residential medium density levels. It can be very challenging. And it is consistent with other uses around the area, which are relatively large lots and single-family homes. The zoning is residential, single-family, and the R1 district does specifically call out for being single-family dwellings, encouraging the development of new ones and protecting those that already exist. The minimum lot size in the R16 zoning district is 6,000 square feet, and all of the lots in this subdivision will exceed that minimum requirement. Here's an aerial context view of the site. It is that triangular-shaped part that is below Hilltop and close to Loop on Ronerville Road there. And the hillside, by the Hilltop Drive area subdivision, is where it's unstable. So the part that we are talking about subdividing here is in the part that isn't in the unstable area. Here's a tentative parcel map. It's pretty hard to see what's going on because the actual part of the subdivision isn't very large on here, but hopefully you were able to see it on your devices, that the remainder parcel is the farthest, I want to say it's north, nope, farthest southeast, I think. Anyways, it's hard to tell on this map for me, and of this entire parcel. And then the two new parcels are closer to Ronerville Road. So the Planning Commission must base the decision on the subdivision on legal findings under the California Government Code, the Fortuna Municipal Code, the Subdivision Map and the Subdivision Map Act. It requires you to deny approval of a tentative map if the findings to deny are made, and those are demonstrated in Exhibit A, and this project does make, is able to qualify for all the findings to be made based on staff's analysis. And so they are, the specific findings are adopted as part of the resolution that you are, that you have before you tonight. The project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act because it is a minor land division. It involves four or fewer parcels. No variances or exceptions are required. All services and access to the proposed parcels meet or will meet local standards. The parcel was not involved in a division of a larger parcel, and it does not itself have an average slope exceeding 20%. It's also exempt under SEQA Guideline Section 15183 in that our general plan already anticipates development at this site, actually, as mentioned, at a higher level, so it should, would not be seen as increasing any type of significant effect on the environment. And again, it is not subject to any of the exceptions that are in the SEQA Guideline Section 15300.2, which involves things like habitat for endangered species, wetlands, that type of thing. This project does not have that issue in the area that it's being subdivided. So as noted here, staff recommends that you approve this project. I do have, thankfully, Deputy City Engineer Matt Nyberg here, who can answer questions about, any questions you may have about access, utilities, and all the engineering-type stuff. And that basically ends my presentation, and obviously, we're here for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Sheri. I would like to invite up the applicant or the representative there here in the chamber if they'd like to speak. If you could state your name.
I'm Wally Wright. I did prepare the tentative map.
Is there anything that you'd like to mention for this project?
Yeah, I have some concerns over some of the items in the report. One of them is the findings that, there's a statement on there, due to the historic instability of the adjacent hillside. As I remember that, somebody, a contractor up there, was clearing off the top of the site, getting ready for building houses, and they pushed the material over the side of the hill and compacted it, but they didn't do a very good job, and as it got saturated in the winter, it slid down the hill. So to say that the hillside is unstable, I have a little bit of a problem with that, that the hillside is unstable, it's just the contractors made a mistake. They didn't do a good job. And so the contractor had to clean up that mess down at the bottom of the hill, and I'm pretty sure the city required engineering studies to make sure that cleanup was done properly, and there should have been documentation, and I was surprised that none of that documentation was brought up in this process. And then to have, at the bottom of the toll, the slope, I would think we were required to put in some sort of setback. I don't know if that setback is really necessary, and I'm afraid that future development of that parcel may be hindered by what's stated in this, in the findings. And if that slope is unstable, or, I'm concerned that, I would have thought, when the city had the contractor fix that, they would have fixed it to a standard that would make that area now developable, but we don't know that. So I'm concerned about that. That's one item. Another item I didn't understand is this one-foot non-vehicle or access strip. I'm beginning to see that in more and more projects, and on this project, you know, looking at that, I'm sure you've driven by and seen that existing house there on Parcel 1, and we need a one-foot non-vehicle or access strip along that parcel. Can anybody imagine somebody trying to build an access off of Ronerville Road onto that parcel, over that sidewalk and fence? Boy, oh boy, I have a hard time visualizing that. Then, there's Ronerville Road from Loop Road coming to the south. There's probably, what, 500 feet, 400, 500 feet of retaining wall there. Do we really need a one-foot non-vehicle or access strip along that section of the road? Is somebody going to try to build a road through that retaining wall? Boy. And then, there is a portion of this parcel that could be developed in the future, that has access off of Ronerville Road, that I think you're taking away the applicant's ability to maybe, in the future, or some future owner, to develop that and bring a driveway off of Ronerville Road. So on my plan, I had a potential street coming off there with a cul-de-sac. If that ever gets developed, who knows? But I think it's, I'm curious, what the benefit is to the people of the City of Fortuna to have these one-foot non-vehicle or access strips? I mean, is it a health and safety issue? I don't know. I find it difficult. And the other thing that had a little bit of concern is the statement in there that the existing sewer system is going to be, what was the word, reviewed, analyzed by the city, and it would be up to the city engineer to determine whether or not that needs to be upgraded. And I have a little bit hard time thinking that there's a little bit of conflict of interest there, and I understand the city's got maybe some little financial problems, and thinking, you know, what if the city wanted a new sewer system and said, that sewer system is just unacceptable, we've got to replace that sewer system? If that were the case, I don't know how my, me and the applicant would appeal that decision. It just seems like there's a conflict of interest there.
Apologies for interrupting, but I'd like to remind the public that they're only allotted three minutes to speak. Unfortunately, you have ran out of time.
Well, I guess you can use your discretion.
You are right. Applicant does get extra time. I'm sorry, I did not mention that. Normally, they do have the opportunity to speak a little bit longer than the public.
He's not the applicant.
Aren't you the representative of the applicant? That's what I called you, that's what I asked for?
Yeah, I believe I am representing the applicant, yes.
Okay.
Two more minutes, if that's okay?
Two more minutes, okay. The other thing that was a little bit concerning to me is the water line on that easterly side. Apparently, Camden Heights Water District installed that water line back in the, who knows when, to serve the subdivision up on Hilltop Lane, and apparently, there could be a PG&E easement, there could be a gas line. I presume, when that Riverview Terrace subdivision, the newer subdivision was done, that a new water line was brought in from Loop Road, and I guess it's looped and still in use, and I'm curious on how often it's been studied or checked. And also, PG&E, we didn't hear back from PG&E to see if there still is a gas line that runs up there and still serves the old Hilltop subdivision, and I don't know if the new Riverview subdivision has gas to their properties or not. Maybe they're all electric, I don't know. Anyway, so unless you have some questions for me, I guess that's all I have to say. I guess that's all I have to say.
We can call you back up during our questions. Thank you. Then, moving on to public comment. Is there anybody on Zoom?
No, there is not.
Is there anybody here in the chamber who would like to speak on this topic that hasn't spoken quite yet?
I'm Brad Chamberlain. I live across the street from this. And I own.
Can you speak a little closer to the microphone?
And I own the 3400 Ronerville Road.
I'd also like to remind there's three minutes as well.
Anyhow, I'm concerned about the water. I haven't heard anything addressed about the water that's going to come off of this. And it runs across, the city has kind of a makeshift ditch that's supposed to turn the water to the creek. And every few years, I have to call them to come clean it. This year was really bad. It overflows and comes across my field. And I want to know what's going to happen there. It needs a DI and a pipe. Get it away and take it to the creek, not just an open ditch, because every year, it fills up with garbage. And that's one of my biggest concerns about it is, I don't want the water. And I don't know if anything's been addressed about it. So that's, and I don't want this makeshift thing. It's just a bunch of sandbag or cement bags piled, turning the water. And when I was a kid, there was a pipe that went down. It's been gone for years. But it's just an open ditch with brush. And it plugs up here all the time. So anyhow, that's my concern about it. And I just see if we have some answers for it.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this moment, I will close public comments if anyone else would like to speak. And then, open it up to the Planning Commission for questions to staff.
Is there any way that we could include that into this? The, excuse me, is there any way that we can include his concerns into this project?
If I may, staff would recommend that you formulate questions based on what you've heard possibly, and we can address them. Many of the questions appear to be for Deputy City Engineer Nyberg, Matt. One of them, I think, was addressed towards me. But because we can't answer to the folks in the gallery, gally, we would need you all to formulate some type of questions or say, "Hey, can you address all of the things?" or whatever.
So taking these in order as presented. The setback at the hill, their request was that there was a geotechnical soils report done, which was done by their engineer. And the recommendation of a 75-foot setback was what the outcome of that was. I don't disagree. I think that that was an engineer's decision. And that's what he decided. Another engineer can put his stamp on the line and say it's 50 foot or 25. We will entertain those ideas. But for this project, it doesn't have an impact. Later projects, he's totally right, it may. In fact, this project was kind of designed with the driveways that are going in to be able to be expanded on and become a cul-de-sac in the future. And looking at that footprint, the setback would impact that. It's not that that can't be changed, but the 75-foot setback is their engineer's recommendation. The one-foot no-access, that's a very standard on frontages where you don't want vehicles going in. Yes, there's a retaining wall for the northernmost part of that. But between this subdivision, where the sidewalk, curb, and gutter comes to, and the retaining wall, there's a big portion of field, which in fact, does have an opening in the fence that people could drive in and out of into the field. We don't want that. The sewer, this is a private sewer. The city is going to take it on as an asset. And I don't think that's an unreasonable ask to have it checked out, made sure it's. We have, I mean, our sewer plant, it'll go from $700,000 on a normal day to 5 million gallons. Okay, we have a ton of inundation. We can't just willy-nilly accept a private system into our system, be responsible for it without having it assessed. The water, the water does go up the existing access and then up the hill on the backside ties into Hilltop. And Hilltop also has water coming from North Loop. It is extra backup water for fire. And that's coming from the fire chief, Russ Brown. That's why that has been incorporated into that system and hasn't been abandoned. And if it was abandoned, they wouldn't have water up there. So the drainage, we have asked for a drainage report, to your point, from the initial development that was done this past winter. The drainage off the site ended up going into one of the three manholes that we're talking about incorporating to the city. And we had a 1,300-gallon overflow violation. So a drainage report is part of this. A drainage plan is part of this. And it's part of the requirements along with the improvement plans. And I think that covers everything.
Excuse me. Yeah, Matt. I, first of all, I was in touch with some of the engineers when all of that subsidence happened, because I sell real estate. And those are big issues for the real estate industry. And why if the contractor came in and I watched the work that he did on layering or putting little roadways in? Didn't he have to get a permit at that time?
Yes, and they did, they did geotech. And it's an engineered rebuilt.
Why is it not of record that they couldn't have researched it? Because there should have been a record of any permit that was done up there. Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was done. We just required a geotech report by their engineer.
But they, yeah, they said that they, they never saw one. I mean, Wally certainly would have looked something like that up, because I would have looked it up.
It was, it was never asked of me.
Well, it should be on file somewhere.
It is. I provided it to their engineer, the geotech report for that.
Okay, so there is a geotech report. And the one-foot non-vehicle access, is that part of, of your, of your requirements of every subdivision?
It's a very typical thing we do when there are parcels being developed that we only want entered from one side. And if you don't do that, sometimes people will make a side access into a property.
But they can't do it without a, without getting a permit for it. They have to get a driveway permit. They have to get something, or you would fine them. I mean, to put a vehicular access, if you have a seven-acre parcel and you have a design that this is supposed to be 6,000-square-foot lots, you're taking away from land inventory that can be used later on by putting, where you can't put a cul-de-sac in.
It's actually not the case. This is the, there is an entrance. And that non-vehicular access, there's a 32-foot entrance. And if it ever became a cul-de-sac, there would be a 50-foot entrance and developed as a road. That would give you all the access to the usable land and parcels on that without having another access off of Ronerville Road. And it's, it's pretty standard with planning.
Well, I've never seen it. But that doesn't mean I, I don't develop a lot here.
All subdivisions I look at.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Chamberlain has an issue with the water crossing the roadway. And that was before these two houses went in, because those concrete blocks have been there forever. So to me, the development on the hill has created more groundwater coming through. And so it should not be just a sole responsibility of them. It should have been a requirement when the one went up the hill, because they're misdirecting water. And so I think that there is probably something wrong with prior permits or something like that, that, you know, he's putting two houses on that have been there before. So he's required to fix the drainage for that whole hillside.
Have a drainage plan to keep the water from running off his property on to.
But it should only be for his two houses. That water that is draining down there is not just his two houses. Anyway, those are things that.
No.
I'm sorry, public comment has been closed. Thank you.
Anyway, I, those are.
I understand what you're saying. And I can't speak to what happened in the past.
Yeah, I know you can't. But you can't compile it to an owner that's coming in and trying to only do two houses.
And, and the drainage from what had happened so far caused us a violation with the State of California, so it's still. It needs to be addressed. I don't know where else to go.
The city.
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt, but we need to limit this to questions and answers. This is becoming more of a conversation, and that's not really what's intended during this time.
I did have one question. The road that runs from Ronerville to the private parcels, is that a public road or is that a privately maintained road? And if it's private, at what point does it become a private road?
This is all you, Matt.
Oh, it's not me. The one that's, the one that's there now?
Correct, yes.
That is a driveway from, from the edge of right-of-way, which, when there's the sidewalk that's there, that's the edge of right-of-way. So from there back, it's a private driveway.
So there'll be no, there will be no required sidewalks from Ronerville towards all the private properties? Correct, so it'll be a privately maintained road?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I did also have a question. You had mentioned that it was currently a private sewer. They'll be connected to the public-maintained sewer. When you say private sewer, do you mean septic?
No, it's, it's sewer pipes. But there's three manholes on the property. One here that goes to the city. And then, there's one over here, that's the one that flooded. And there's one out in the field that the two residences went to. They were on private property. They were never part of the city's assets. We are putting in three private laterals. And the city is going to take on those assets and responsibility for them. And if we're going to do that, we need to have them at least look that, see. I mean, are we taking on thousands of gallons of water?
So at this point, they were receiving Fortuna water. And they were going through the private sewer system to the public sewer system. So they were always being charged, whatever the water rate would be and the sewer rate would be. But they were maintaining their own sewer system at the time.
Yes.
And at this point, it will now be the city that's maintaining it? Or will it be just?
The mains, from the manhole to manhole to manhole, which is the end. So that will be maintained by the city.
Okay. Thank you.
So the laterals is what he's responsible for?
From, from the, from the residences to the main line that we're, yes.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, I have a question about the Map Act. Because this parcel, I understand a parcel map's four or fewer parcels. This appears to me that there's three parcels, but you call it two, two parcel map subdivisions. So theoretically, you could divide, you could put four more parcels and a remainder on this. Is that, is my understanding correct? Because to me, this looks, you call it a remainder, but it's three, ending up with three parcels.
That's correct. It's a remainder in that they're, it's really only, well, yes, it's creating three new lots.
Right.
But one is considered a remainder. That's.
So I just wanted to, under the Map Act, could you create four new parcels and have the fifth one a remainder? And it'd still be a parcel map versus final map?
Absolutely.
Yes.
This remainder, as I understand, the Map Act could be divided twice more and then no more. There was talk of doing more parcels and doing more of the cul-de-sac development. The way this, this whole project kind of came about in a backwards way, where it was the realization that they couldn't put the two houses that they bought on the property because it exceeded what you could put on the property. So that's when we suggested, well, in order to do this, you need to do a subdivision, get at least one more parcel. So there, we met with them several times, talked about different arrangements, the different ways you could go about it. And their final decision was to just make two new lots off the hole.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Or would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution P-2025-3126.
I will second the motion.
To adopt.
I'm, I'm sorry, real quick. I just want to confirm, Cole, he is alternate, correct? Is he able to second? Okay, thank you.
To adopt Resolution P-2025-3126, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving with conditions a tentative map to subdivide a 7.69-acre parcel located at 3495 Ronerville Road into two new residential lots and a remainder parcel, and finding the project to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Commissioner Ammon?
I have a question.
We've already started.
Sorry, we've already started the motion.
We've moved on, sorry. Commissioner Culkins?
No.
Commissioner Christensen?
No.
Commissioner Doris?
Yes.
Commissioner Haley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Chair Kine?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. Then, moving on to our next, next item, we'll go to the Planning Commission's staff communications.
I feel like I'm doing a lot of talking tonight. Sheri Meads, Community Development Director. So I want to thank three of you for signing up for the ethics training that's going to be next Wednesday. That's great. Hopefully, it's enjoyable. I also want to announce that Commissioner Nick Burke has resigned from the Planning Commission. And we are very grateful to Commissioner Ammon, who has been an alternate and is now the real deal.
Congratulations, I was unaware.
And I also want to let you know that there are two more minor subdivisions headed your way. So if anybody has any questions, wants a link to the Subdivision Map Act, things like that, I'm happy to provide resources or any of the things that may help with your deliberations and thoughts. That's it for me.
Okay, unless there's any other questions, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, hearing done, we are done.